Welcome to the January 21st, 2020 City Council Study Session. We're going to start right off today with our report on firearm and community safety update.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just by way of background, the topic of gun safety was discussed by the City Council earlier this year. And at that time, the Council asked staff to return with information on what the city was doing related to firearm safety. Joining us this evening is Nathan McCallum and our Deputy City Manager, Tony Asparza, our Assistant Director in our Parks Department. And to Nathan's left is Steve Mylett, our Police Chief, to provide the Council with this update. Nathan?
Thank you very much, City Manager Miyake and Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and members of the City Council. We're pleased to be here this evening to present our report. I think we all feel that the topic of community and firearm safety is very important. Today, we're going to bring back information that the Council requested on what the city does to keep Bellevue safe, and especially as it relates to safety with firearms. To highlight the agenda for this presentation tonight, we will review the history of what brought this topic before the Council. Assistant Director Asparza will explain the comprehensive programming around education and support services that advance making Bellevue a safe city. And then Police Chief Mylett will speak to the additional educational outreach, community engagement, and enforcement, and highlighting the new tools available as it relates to the latest law changes. Ooh, right button. So let me quickly touch on how the conversation came before the Council today. Council members may recall last June that it considered an application for an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. And the application was named Vision Zero for Gun Safety, and that plan was not advanced. But following that decision, however, the Council directed staff to look into the topic of firearm safety and to come back with more information with an interest to understand what the city of Bellevue does to keep the community safe, and specifically regarding the use of firearms. And in the meantime, staff remained in communication with the applicants of that Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And in these past months, I actually have been the point person with that community group. And I would also say, take note that in your packet, there is a letter from the local group to City Manager Miyake with over 130 signatures that includes a list of requests for his consideration. And in preparation for tonight, staff conducted research and compiled information for the report. So you may already be hearing in these opening remarks that the city of Bellevue employs a holistic approach to keeping the community safe through education, prevention, support services, enforcement, partnerships with the Bellevue School District, partnerships with other law enforcement agencies and human services providers, as well as additional public outreach. I think the Council tonight will get a sense of the comprehensive coordinated city services and partnerships that have been working to keep the community safe, including when a firearm is present. So with that, Assistant Director Asparza will begin the report.
Thank you, Nathan, and council members. As the city of Bellevue takes a holistic approach to public safety, the city has chosen to make a significant investment in education, prevention, and rehabilitation, recognizing that when we support the most vulnerable in our community, we make the community safer for everyone. Research shows a clear correlation between the provision of human services and rehabilitative services and the reduction of crime and increase in public safety. In line with this, the city of Bellevue provides a Human Services Fund to contract with local human service providers for services in our community. In 2019 to 2020, the city budgeted to invest over $7 million into contracts with human services providers via that fund. Within this, over $5 million will be invested in 47 programs that directly tie to the safety and stability of our most vulnerable community members, and again, according to research, would correlate to increased safety in our community. Each of these dollars invested in critical human services helps provide services that can stabilize and support a vulnerable community member, which can then help prevent the individual from becoming a victim of violence, or help prevent a vulnerable community member from becoming a perpetrator of violence. Human services funded by the city that connect to public safety range a wide span of areas. One of those is youth programming. Within youth programming, the city provides direct services and also provides funding. The city has extensive programming for youth throughout our community centers. In addition, the city's Youth Link program provides a place for the youth voice to be amplified and heard, and for youth to learn about civic engagement. The city also partners with the Bellevue School District to place wraparound coordinators at Stevenson Elementary, Lake Hills Elementary, and Highland Middle School. These services connect community resources to schools, families, and youth. Through this direct programming and funding, the city is working to ensure that youth have safe places to be, healthy adult role models, leadership opportunities, and opportunities to learn how to resolve conflict. Youth programs that are funded through the Human Services Fund include the Bellevue School District, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Bellevue, Childcare Resources, NAMI Eastside, Crisis Connections, and Youth Eastside Services. The city also provides human services funding to support mental health treatment and substance abuse disorder treatment in our community. Those living with a mental health diagnosis or a substance abuse disorder are especially vulnerable. These individuals are actually more prone to being victims of violence. The investment made by the city helps ensure individuals have access to sometimes lifesaving treatment that can help the individual move to safety and stability. Mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment programs funded by the city's Human Service Fund include Asian Counseling and Referral Service, ICRON of Greater Seattle, NAMI Eastside, Therapeutic Health Services, and Youth Eastside Services. The city's Human Services Fund also supports services for victims of sexual assault and domestic violence. These critical services include advocacy, legal counseling, shelter, and resources to survivors. Through this funding, the city is working to ensure that our community can provide safety to victims, thereby reducing what could be additional incidences of victimization. Sexual assault and domestic violence services, which are funded by the city, include Consejo Counseling and Referral Service, Harborview Medical Center, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, LifeWire, and Refugee Women's Alliance. In addition, the city's Human Services Fund also supports housing services for those without a stable home in our community. These services help ensure that individuals have a safe place for respite and the support they need to attain stability. When these sources are provided, which are vital to the safety of these individuals, it also increases the safety of every member of our community. Housing services funded by the city's Human Services Fund include Catholic Community Services of King County, Community Homes, Congregations for the Homeless, Friends of Youth, Hope Link, Imagine Housing, Solid Ground, and Sophia Way. As a preventative measure, the city's Human Services Fund also supports general legal assistance for community members. These funds help support services that provide advocacy and assistance with conflict resolution. This type of support for our community helps ensure that conflict can be resolved without the need for further escalation. The city's Human Service Fund supports general legal assistance through Eastside Legal Assistance Program and King County Bar Association. In addition to these human services, the city's Fire Department maintains a community outreach and assistance program known as FIRE CARES. Firefighters or police can notify the FIRE CARES team for intervention. CARES advocates meet with residents in their home, identify their needs, and connect them to community resources that will better meet those needs than a call to 911. The city of Bellevue also invests in education, accountability, and rehabilitation through our probation division. The city is somewhat unique among surrounding cities, as Bellevue provides its own probation program with an annual budget of approximately $1.5 million. Probation monitors misdemeanor offenders, ensures compliance with court-ordered sanctions, connects offenders to community and treatment providers to increase stabilization, and provides direct rehabilitative services. All of this reduces the likelihood of recidivism, which makes the community safer for all of us. Bellevue is able to operate from a model of restorative justice and rehabilitation, providing services that are responsive to the specific needs of our community. Our probation division is another way the city is investing in community safety and monitoring and managing risk. We welcome resident involvement through the city's Human Services Commission and Probation Advisory Board, which help guide our services to the community. Combined, our human services investments and our investment in our probation division are just some of the ways that the city works to ensure public safety through education, prevention, and rehabilitation. This holistic approach allows us to address a problem and reduce the risk before it occurs. Chief Mylett will now share further about the work of the Police Department.
Thank you, Tony. Good evening, Mayor, members of Council, and Mr. Miyake. In the following slides, I will discuss the Bellevue Police Department's efforts to educate the public on matters related to firearm safety and the efforts the BPD takes to enforce laws pertaining to firearms. I will share with you some processes we have in place to reduce gun violence and to protect potential victims and people in crisis. Additionally, I will share some statistical information related to firearms. And in the last part of my presentation, I will discuss efforts we will take in 2020 to build upon the city's foundation to reduce gun violence and promote firearm safety. I am very proud to report that Bellevue continues to be a safe city. We enjoy a relatively low crime rate, and I believe this is largely due to the leadership of the city, the strong relationship between city staff and the Bellevue community, which is indicative of the dedication and commitment of our city employees. I know I speak for all city employees when I say, we take gun violence very seriously, and we will not decrease our efforts to eliminate gun violence from Bellevue. All law enforcement agencies in Washington are guided by both federal and state laws. In terms of firearm possession, use, sales, and transfer, the Bellevue Police Department primarily enforces state law. However, we do investigate certain federal violations, and we work closely with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, as well as the U.S. Attorney's Office when such incidents occur. In 2019, the BPD responded to approximately 97,000 calls for service. Of these calls, our records indicate 0.05% involved a firearm. In 2019, we witnessed 45 incidents where a firearm was present. That doesn't mean that the firearm was discharged, it just means that it was present at the scene. And this includes the homicide at Goldsmith Park, the first homicide in Bellevue in over three years. We believe the gang responsible for the homicide was involved in many of the discharging of firearms incidents in the city during this time period. Once we arrested the suspects for the homicide, we witnessed a significant decrease in the number of reports of shots fired in the city. We have found, after examining all the types of crimes we investigate, the most common crimes that involve the firearm in Bellevue this past year included weapons violations, robbery, assault, and harassment. The relatively low number of incidents in Bellevue where a firearm was present is not something that happened by accident. There's a theme that you have already begun to hear about a holistic approach. I firmly believe this holistic approach the city takes for all matters related to community safety results in a safe Bellevue and a place where people want to live as they raise families, conduct business, and visit. For our part, the Bellevue Police Department impacts firearm safety and gun violence in five distinct areas. First, we conduct enhanced background checks for all pistol and semi-automatic assault rifle sales or transfers to Bellevue residents prior to issuance of concealed pistol licenses and before the return of any privately owned firearms in the possession of the Police Department's property unit. The purpose of the background check is to determine whether the person is legally eligible to possess a firearm. Almost all firearm sales and transfers in the state require a background check. This includes sales and transfers through a licensed dealer at gun shows, online, and between residents or unlicensed persons. If a person is ineligible to possess firearms under federal state law, that person's application is denied, and the denial is entered into the state's system as a flag for other law enforcement agencies to be aware that this person is ineligible. The Bellevue Police Department's enhanced background check process has been used as a model for other local agencies. Members of the department have sat on the King County Regional Firearms Task Force that developed the model policies for all King County law enforcement agencies. Additionally, if an ineligible person attempts to purchase a firearm in Bellevue, we get notified by the state, and we will investigate those incidents and consult with the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office or the U.S. Attorney's Office to file charges. The next area is the storage and release of firearms. Persons are often required to surrender their firearms to their local law enforcement agency for storage if the person's subject to a court order for domestic violence, protection orders, or criminal no-contact orders. The Bellevue Police Department receives firearms in such cases and does not release these firearms until a thorough background check has been completed and a court order is delivered to the BPD to release the weapons. Additionally, our staff will notify family members and household members that have a need to know that the firearm is being released back to the person. This is primarily for their safety. We also impact firearm safety and gun violence through the use of Extreme Risk Protection Orders, or ERPO for short. In my opinion, one of the best-approved initiatives that went into effect in 2017 was the ERPO law. The impact of this law has had positive impacts on preventing victimization and protecting people in crisis. Law enforcement agencies and members of the public are authorized by state law to seek Extreme Risk Protection Orders to remove firearms from individuals and to block their ability to access firearms. The law was designed to temporarily prevent individuals who are at high risk of harming themselves or others from accessing firearms by allowing family, household members, and the police to obtain a court order when there is demonstrated evidence that the person poses a significant danger, including danger associated with a mental health crisis or violent behavior. This law has been used by the city of Bellevue, the Bellevue Police Department, at least 11 times. The Police Department has successfully prevented individuals from accessing firearms who have expressed suicidal thoughts, were experiencing a mental health crisis, or pose a substantial danger to the public or themselves. I'd like to tell you a story right now, how that law was used in Bellevue. In 2017, there was an individual who was experiencing mental health delusions, causing him to act in an erratic way that put himself, others, and his family in danger. Through an investigation, it was discovered the suspect was physically abusing his family, and he believed that others in his family were conspiring against him. This led to him forcing his immediate family members to march around the house, which he referred to as a bunker, in formation while carrying firearms. He carried an AR-15 rifle with him, and he conducted nightly weapons checks to ensure his family was protecting their home. The suspect's behavior escalated when he threatened to shoot his wife's doctor in order to get her medical attention. The suspect owned many high-powered firearms, including multiple AR-15s, and was making his own ammunition within his home. BPD petitioned for an ERPO upon the belief that he was a danger to himself, his family, and others due to his threats of violence towards his family and others, and statements consistent with the threats that he was making. This allowed the BPD to remove the firearms from the home and restrict his access to firearms before any further violence could occur. After the firearms were secured from his household and after he was released from the hospital, in the following days, the suspect became very violent with his two young daughters. When he was not happy with their lack of vigilance in the home, he forced the girls to place their hands palm-down on a table, he took an ax handle, and started beating their hands. This resulted in one of the girls experiencing a broken finger. He also ordered one of his daughters to drink bleach when she failed to clean the fish tank to the suspect's satisfaction. The two girls were able to escape from their nightmare and were brought to the BPD by a friend. I can only imagine what would have happened had we not been able to secure those firearms in his home. This individual would also conduct close-order drills outside his home, posing threats to his neighbors. That person is currently in jail. BPD can also accept voluntary surrender or formal waiver of firearm rights. Members of the public may voluntarily surrender firearms to their local police department to hold in safekeeping. This may be done if family members or household members feel unsafe with firearms in their home, or if an individual is having thoughts of suicide. In addition, in 2019, the legislature enacted a law that allows an individual to voluntarily waive their firearm possessory rights through filing paperwork with the court clerk. Once a person voluntarily waives his or her firearm rights, they cannot petition the court to have their rights restored until seven days have passed. This allows them a cooling-off period. The policy behind this new law is to allow those who are having thoughts of suicide to voluntarily waive and surrender their firearm rights while they are in a time of crisis and in order to seek assistance. And with court-ordered surrenders prior to the return of voluntary surrendered firearms, a thorough background check is conducted to confirm eligibility to possess the firearm. Beyond the background check, a review is conducted to ensure that the firearm does not meet the requirements for judicial forfeiture, and that there are no concerns that the requestor presents a substantial risk of violence, such that the department would be justified in seeking an ERPO. In 2019, the BPD received 15 firearms under such conditions. And up on the screen for the audience, there are two websites that you can go to. One is for more information on how to initiate an Extreme Risk Protection Order, and the other provides information how to voluntarily surrender or formal waiver of firearm rights. And finally, our ability to protect people in crisis includes mental health commitments. Involuntary commitments are used by police officers to take an individual experiencing a mental health crisis or drug or alcohol-induced crisis to Overlake Medical Center for involuntary mental health evaluation. Based on the evaluation, the individual may be committed to a mental health or substance abuse facility for treatment. Officers are trained to ask for voluntary consent to retrieve any firearm that is in the person's possession. Prior to release of surrendered firearms back to the person, again, a background check and a review for an ERPO are conducted. In addition, Bellevue FIRE CARES provides social service outreach to individuals exhibiting signs of crisis. The Police Department has also partnered and has support from the King County Mental Health Crisis Team to assist with situations that require trained mental health professionals. The Bellevue Police Department engages the community in firearm safety through various programs. For example, the Bellevue Police Department and the Bellevue School District have collaborated to establish a School Resource Officer Program that places a uniformed officer in each of the high schools and middle schools. School Resource Officers, or SROs, attend advanced training to prepare them for working in a school atmosphere and with students. The SROs also act as an accessible resource for their assigned schools, students, parents, educators, and neighbors of the school to promote a safe learning environment and safe surrounding neighborhoods. The Police Department and School District take part in joint preparedness planning, drills and exercises, and active shooter training. They also coordinate efforts for critical incident response plans. Additionally, SROs have used their position to engage students and faculty on firearm safety and the dangers associated with gun violence. Sergeant Jones, the supervisor of the unit, will also go into the elementary schools and offer this information to elementary school-age children at their level. The BPD also promotes safe gun storage. In addition to enforcing the new safe gun storage requirements of Initiative 1639, the Police Department has partnered with the National Shooting Sports Foundation, which promotes firearm safety and education. This foundation, through its Project Child Safe program, provides firearm safety kits that include a gun lock and safety educational materials to the public free of charge. These free firearm safety kits are available at Bellevue Police Headquarters and the community substations. I would have brought one with me, actually several, but we're out. So we're in the process of replenishing our supply. By providing free trigger locks and educational materials, the Police Department's goal is to promote safe firearm handling and storage within the community. Community safety outreach has been and will continue to be a primary focus for the city of Bellevue. In coordination with the six advisory councils to the chief of police, the Bellevue Police Department hosts community safety forums and town hall meetings. Community members are welcome to ask questions about increasing public safety within their neighborhoods and to learn about crime prevention, and to learn about other methods and techniques to keep them safe. Topics at these meetings include and arrange from crime prevention to incidents that have impacted the specific community. By educating the public on crime prevention methods, a wider audience will be knowledgeable on the services provided by the city. In 2019, the Bellevue Police Department will increase its efforts to educate the public on firearm safety. Domestic violence victims are at heightened risk for violence. That is why the city has partnered with King County and houses a domestic violence advocate within the Police Department. This person serves as a liaison to the Prosecution Division of the Bellevue City Attorney's Office. The domestic violence advocate connects victims of domestic violence to resources and services to enhance their safety. These resources include education on orders to surrender weapons. Part of the advocate's role is to develop a safety plan with the victim to remove the victim from the abusive relationship. Sometimes, safety includes disposal of confiscated firearms. The Police Department is authorized by state law to confiscate firearms under certain circumstances. After confiscation, the courts may judicially forfeit the firearms to the Police Department. If that occurs, the department is authorized by the Bellevue City Code to dispose of firearms taken into its custody. The most common method of disposal is melting the firearms down. Between 2018 and 2019, the BPD destroyed 80 such firearms. And finally, we make sure recovered firearm is never used in a future crime. The Bellevue Police Department test fires all crime guns, lost or stolen firearms, and forfeited firearms in its possession. The fired cartridges, cases, and shot shells are submitted to the Washington State Patrol Lab, and test results are submitted to the Integrated Ballistic Information System, or IBUS for short, and the National Integrated Ballistic Information System, NIBIN, for comparison to other shell casings received from crime scenes. These tests have been successful in linking a firearm to crimes that occurred in Bellevue and outside of Bellevue. The BPD partners with other city departments, regional law enforcement agencies, the Bellevue School District, and, most importantly, the Bellevue community to ensure Bellevue remains a safe place to raise families, re-conduct business, and to visit. Year after year, community feedback through surveys rate public safety as very important, as very important, and a strong majority of respondents report that they feel safe or very safe in their neighborhoods and throughout Bellevue. I'm quite convinced the city's holistic approach to community safety influences the survey results. Our city-wide approach to community safety seems to be working. However, we cannot let our guard down. While the city of Bellevue has not witnessed a level of gun violence as compared to other cities across the country and in our own state, we are not immune from the horrors we've witnessed elsewhere. Places like Newtown, Connecticut, Sandy Hook Elementary School, Marysville, Washington, San Bernardino, California, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and the list goes on and on. All of these events can certainly happen in Bellevue. We must not be content and rest on our laurels. We must continue to challenge ourselves to do more. With the support of the city manager and the city council, we civilianized our Crime Prevention Specialist position. We recently filled the position with a very talented individual, Ms. Ruby Daly. From day one, Ms. Daly has been hard at work developing programs to build upon our efforts to connect with the community with the goal of providing them with information designed to reduce crime, reduce the fear of crime, and enhance their quality of life in Bellevue. In 2020, we will develop a comprehensive firearm safety education program. We will use all types of platforms to get our message out, to include leveraging our relationship with the chief's advisory council, the Bellevue School District, local businesses, and any and all stakeholder groups. As I stated in my opening remarks, I believe everyone at the city of Bellevue views firearm- As I stated in my opening remarks, I believe everyone at the city of Bellevue views firearm safety very seriously, and I further believe our holistic approach to community safety helps to keep Bellevue a safe city, but we cannot let our guard down. I will turn this presentation back over to Mr. McComman.
Thank you. I'm noting the time, so I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Mayor Robinson. We're available for questions if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Mylaud, Mr. McComman, and Mrs. Parra. Really good presentation. I'd like to open it up for comments or questions. Councilmember Barxale.
So, thank you for the presentation and the work that you've put into preparing that presentation and documenting all the services and toward preventing gun violence in our community. So, I have one point that I'm interested in, and that is, how are we learning along the way? What sort of data are we collecting? What sort of research are we doing along the way in evolving the services and the work that, the programs and so forth, based on that data?
So, I can speak on the Police Department, the efforts that we're doing. We collect a ton of data, and that data is used to inform us on where to place our resources. So, shortly after I arrived in 2015, we started CompStat, which takes data to assist us with intelligence-led policing. And so, we can pinpoint where crime is occurring, look for trends, and then deploy our resources accordingly to combat that crime, to include gun violence. The challenge with Bellevue is that there is, I'm not saying that crime doesn't, of course, crime happens in Bellevue, but it's so low that we can't, you know, address trend information, where we can project where the next crime is going to occur, the next aggravated robbery, or whatever it is. And that's a challenge for us. However, we do use the information that we get through data to inform the sergeants and to make deployment decisions. You and I have had a conversation recently, and I think the challenge that you've given to me is I've taken to heart, and I think there's more we can do with data, and we're looking for those opportunities to do so. So, I hope to come back and report that we, this is the new methods that we're using data for. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Stokes?
Oh, did you have another? Oh, excuse me.
No, no problem. So, then, within the human services spectrum, we'll actually be coming back with a presentation to you on February 4th on our Human Services Needs Update, which is a biannual data collection process that we use to hear from the community in a variety of ways: phone, online surveys, community forums, interviews with providers and recipients of services. And then, we do analyze that data and produce that as a resource for our entire city, and it specifically relates to the work of the Human Services Commission, so they can best make their recommendations for funding, which will then come back to you at the end of our funding year.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you and the whole staff on this presentation, and I think this, I was reflecting before and looking forward to this presentation and after I read it in the packet. It's one of those areas that we are really doing a lot of things, and I think sometimes we forget to let people know what we're doing, and I think this conversation that people from the community have initiated has really helped us focus on that, and the good news is, we can come back and say we're doing things. And I really appreciate that, and it's a very comprehensive approach, and there's a lot more to do. I did want to also comment about the SROs, and I know personally from involvement in schools a long time ago, and when I was the PTSA Council President, we had various meetings with them, and they're, and they've always been a very positive influence in the community, which is interesting. I mean, some high school boys don't like them finding, you know, a case of beer in the trunk, but, which is a real incident that happened one time. But I think the Police Department has approached this and works with them in a very positive way, so that actually people, the kids have a good understanding and relationship with the Police Department, and understand both that they're there to help, but also there to make sure that things are done right. So, that's great to have that continued. And I'm very pleased, and I'd be glad to, when we talk about the resolution, but we've received a number of letters and particularly some goals that a large community group is interested in. And just to the panel, I think our resolution is great, and it sets out our policy, and we've talked about a lot of things here. How do we, what are the next steps? What do you see, looking at some of these things? And I know we're not going to go through all these tonight, but looking at these, and how can we work through some of those pieces? And I think maybe the numbered thing at the bottom in terms of talking about social justice topics that are council retreat around firearm safeties, a positive thing to do as well. So, just be interested in where we, what the next steps are on this, because this is just the public information part, but are you taking these into consideration as we look at this?
Yes. This evening, we're taking into consideration how the council conversation plays out in this meeting, and that would be the direction going forward. I would highlight what the chief was mentioning about next steps. There are three new programming elements that are being added in 2020. So, I think it's exciting to be able to say we actually are going to do more, and it's going to be more data-informed going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that you've taken a holistic approach to look at the whole piece. I think that's important. I suppose it's a good thing that the CompStat data is showing that the data is so low, and yet, we do need to stay vigilant and not sit on our laurels. I wanted to understand, when we talk about data, also the firearm safety kit, you talked about the fact that we've actually run out and we need to order some more. That seems like a piece of data that we could also be collecting, which is, what are we doing proactively, right? So, if we start to see an increase in the number of folks that are reaching out to the Police Department to get these safety kits. We just had a health fair over the weekend, or actually yesterday. It would be nice, actually, to have that available so that our community doesn't actually have to come to us. We can actually have that available for, to do that. And I'm glad to see that we have a crime prevention coordinator and do more outreach. I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, as we do outreach, we talk about those that turn back in their guns because there's an issue. I've read that there are also places where people want to voluntarily return their firearms, not because they're doing something wrong, but that they're just done and they're happy to return their firearm. Do we have a program like that?
Yes, ma'am. And we will take their firearms and will gladly take their firearms and store them, or if they want to relinquish and say, "I don't want it anymore," then we will go through the destruction path after we test it and such.
Okay. So, those are things that part of the education is letting our community know that these different programs are available so that they can, and take advantage of that, right?
The three areas, and I forgot to mention, I'm glad Mr. McComman brought it up, the three areas that we're going to focus in on, the top three priorities is gun safety in 2020, sexual assault prevention, and domestic violence. And we're going to be developing comprehensive education programs and get our message out, and we're going to be doing that through town hall meetings, safety forums, wherever we can get an audience, we're going to, you know, provide all the information. To include gun safety kits, we'll bring those with us as well.
Okay. No, that sounds great. And then, as I'm looking through the list of information from the community, I'm struck by the fact that we have a number of these already that we're doing, but there are some that we're, I'm not sure whether we are. So, the regional approach to firearm safety, do we have that right now?
We do. So, once a month, the East Side Chiefs meet at the various police departments on the East Side, and we discuss everything that impacts public safety within our region, and we collaborate on everything. Also, once a month, in a separate meeting, all of the King County Chiefs meet to include the State Patrol, our federal partners, the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, the training facility in Burien. And again, we approach this as one team because we all have a vested interest, because the individuals that engage in gun violence aren't limited to the place where they live. They go from place to place to place to place, and so, we share information all the time.
Yeah. Well, I guess I was thinking, not necessarily the folks that are actually committing crimes with guns, but just the fact that having firearms around homes can create safety with kids getting access to them. So, I guess I'm looking at it not only from the lens of people perpetrating crimes with firearms, but just the fact that, from the standpoint of community safety, how we're keeping our community safe from that.
You know, one of the worst things that I've experienced in my career is where a child was accidentally shot and killed by a sibling that were playing with guns. And again, that is something that every police officer, all the jurisdictions in the state of Washington, because I'm also a member of the State Chiefs Association, well, we are all concerned about, and we all, in our own way, educate the community on how to properly handle weapons, store weapons, and that's going to be a focus of our education campaign.
Good. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Megan Tony, Chief Mylaud, thank you for the presentation tonight. Really appreciate it. And like you said, what really struck me was it's no accident that we have such a low crime rate, and it's also no accident that only 0.05% is what we're seeing in the city right now. So, I think we all owe the police department a debt of gratitude for that, for doing such a tremendous job of keeping this community safe, especially when you consider what happens to some of the neighboring communities and cities around us. I think we have a well-earned reputation for enforcing our laws, and if you come here and you want to use a firearm, there will be consequences, for sure. So, thank you for that, first of all. I want to ask a couple quick questions, because I know there's a lot of acronyms here, and I'm just blown away by everything that we're doing, by the way. There's a lot going on here, and I'm sure some of the things here, some people in the audience are watching our TV, it's like, wow, this is a lot more going on than I would have anticipated to ensure our safety as a community. So, we had talked about background check, but there's also enhanced background checks as well. Chief, could you just elaborate just a little bit on that in terms of what that means when it's enhanced?
So, the enhanced background check is going to take about two weeks, and we go and we look at their local history, we'll look at national history, we'll look to make sure that there aren't any ERPOS, and there's other things in the enhanced background check that I know I'm missing, but behind me, I know Melissa Chin is out there in the audience. So, if you would like, I can, you know, she can come up and, you know, describe a little bit better than I can. If you feel it's appropriate, sure. Melissa?
Melissa Chin, from the City Attorney's Office. An enhanced background check when it comes to firearms is conducted when there's a transfer of firearms, or an application for a CPL, or if we're returning a firearm. That enhanced check consists of a criminal background check on the national, local level. We also look into our local contacts, not just for arrests, but for any contacts we may have. We also do a mental health check with the state that requires the state to let us know if there has been any commitments on the mental health side of the house. And then, also, we conduct a check on the local courts as far as any open cases go, any warrants, because warrants are a disqualifier in the state, also if there is any proof of failing to appear in court, or if they have active court orders. So, it really is a check on the local, state, and national level.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that.
Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Chief, then I have another question about, because you and your department certainly do put yourself at harm's way when enforcing perhaps somebody like the ERPO, for example. I don't know how much detail you want to provide there, but how does the department go about that when you've requested an ERPO for an individual, or like in this case, the story that you described there? How do you go about actually securing the firearms when you're dealing with someone who might be having a mental health crisis?
Very carefully.
Yes. I would hope so.
We will do our best to try and get the person out of the house and away from access of the firearms. We'll try to build some sort of rapport with the individual in advance of serving the ERPO. In this particular case, with the individual I described, when he was making threats to shoot his wife's doctor, members of the Police Department were, contacted his wife. She allowed us to come into the house. He was in bed and had his hands up underneath the covers, and my assistant chief was out there at the scene, because he's still very active out in the field. He and the other officers were talking to the individual. Over here in the corner was an AR-15. Up here on the shelf was a Colt 45, another AR-15, and a long rifle, and we didn't know what was under the sheets as far as firearms. But by building that rapport, and after we got past the fact that he thought the CIA was shooting at him and coming after him, he was cooperative. We were able to get him out of the house. We took him to the hospital where he can get treatment, and during that time when he was away, we got the ERPO, went in there, got the firearms.
Fantastic.
He got released, and then, you know, terrorized his family.
And then, one last question, but also, I think, a potential learning moment for folks that, you know, may be suffering from suicidal thoughts, for example, that perhaps they do have firearms in the house, but are not quite sure how to go about contacting the police, or should they bring the firearms to your department? Should they call you? Plus, you know, quite frankly, they might not know how to handle a firearm. They might not know where to, you know, to make sure that the firearm is even empty, for example. So, what would you suggest to someone, or even a kid who found a gun but doesn't want to get in trouble, but wants to make sure the gun gets into the department's hands? What do you suggest for that?
So, if there's an individual who's having suicidal thoughts that are in crisis, and councilmen, there are a lot of people in this country that go through that, and we're living in some tough times, and it's certainly understandable, and there is no shame with seeking help, and we are, what we represent is help. So, if you, if somebody is having those thoughts, and they want to take the temptation of the weapon, just dial 911. Let the dispatcher know why you were calling. Meet the officer outside, leave the weapons inside, and then ask the officer to go and secure the weapons. If that student knows of a firearm, and that student or anybody wants to remain anonymous, they can dial 911, share that information, and then we will get involved and investigate and try to secure the firearm. But I really wish more people that are experiencing those thoughts would reach out to the police or anybody for assistance. We know that statistically, many people commit suicide on impulse, and others think about it, and they have these thoughts, they don't do it, but then, all of a sudden, something increases that crisis, and then they have access. And so, anything we can do for our part to help the person get the help that they need, we will do.
Thanks, Chief.
And if I can, one real quick, sir, you gave me a lot of, the Police Department a lot, and a lot of compliments, and I appreciate it, but the work that Toni is doing and her team on the back end, the prevention, assists us, all of us, a great deal, and I do want to commend the work that Human Services is doing. It's important work, and they do a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. It's been a great discussion. And yeah, to follow on what Chief Mylaud said, I think that the multiprongent approach of the prevention of the human services, we also didn't mention that we do a lot of community building, which we, the mediation program helps resolve issues quite often between neighbors. We have the neighborhood program, we have the diversity advantage program, where we have people, where we're connecting people, and when people are connected to each other, it's good for their mental health, it's good, also, it lets people see if there's someone that's in crisis because they're connected. So, that is part of the prevention that we don't even talk about. But the human services, the rehabilitation, and the education piece, the extreme risk protection order, the fellow that you spoke about, before the law was changed by the state legislature to allow the extreme risk protection order, you couldn't have gone in and taken his firearms. And that is a huge change in state law that has been incredible tool. You said you've used it 11 times. That's 11 tragedies that didn't happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Which has kept that firearm rate to one-half of 1/10 of 1%, right? So, and then, we of course have the enforcement, and making sure that we have our police staff fully, fully staffed as we are now, so that they can get out and be proactive, I think is critical, to making sure that we prevent crime and prevent suicides. So, I'm, I'm just, to follow on what many of my colleagues have said, I'm really proud of the work this city has done, but I'm glad that you are saying we must remain vigilant, and there's more work to do. I think the three new programs with the Gun Safety Initiative and reaching out to all the groups, your different citizen advisory groups to the police, as well as the sexual assault and domestic violence prevention, those will all, hopefully, the next time you're here, that one-half of 1/10 of 1% will be even lower. So, thank you. I'm very... very, very pleased to have shared this information with the council and with the public, because this community, and this council, and this city, all the staff, really do care about keeping our city connected to each other and safe. And we appreciate everyone's help with that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. Well, thanks, Chief, and, you know, Assistant Deputy Director. Fire, firearm, or gun safety, you know, is very important. It affects every community, everybody. You know, gun is a potentially, you know, if not already dangerous weapon, you know? If you don't know how to use it, it causes problems. Whether it's crime or not, you know, crime, of course, you know, that's for sure. But even, like you mentioned, accident, mental problems, various reasons, just carelessness. So, it is a situation, it's an issue that we have to be serious about, address it. And you cannot say, well, it doesn't happen here. It does. The difference is that we're very fortunate, lucky, very lucky. Bellevue has a great, great community, all the way from top to the bottom. I've lived here for over 50 years. As you mentioned, it's one of the safest cities in the country. If it's not in the world, it is for sure, you know? And it's because we have a great police department from top down. It's individual. The tools that you mentioned about, I think Councilmember Jennifer, this ERPO thing, is excellent. It's a tool. We always have to look for tools. And you tell us what tools we need, and we need to make them available, so that you can do something with. And I appreciate Councilmember Ossie mentioning about data. Data's important, too. But the key is, what do we do with them? What do we do with the tools? What do we do with policies? What do we do with the help you get? And it has to be associated with the individual that is going to take advantage of the tools we have. And it starts with police chief. But you're only one police chief. If your staff doesn't listen to you, you're not going to do anything, right?
True.
You're going to sit there and just shuffle papers. But it's because we, police officers, you, the department, the city, council, staff, are very serious. You take actions. You are diligent, vigilant. You know, you have a tool, you use it, you investigate. That's why the words you use, you investigate. You don't sit there. You take actions. You know, ERPO, ERPO law is there, but if you don't take, do anything about it, nothing happens. You go look into it. You do something. You prevented 11 potential incidents, okay? And you talk about this voluntary surrender, farm wave, the same thing. You know, the potential suicide prevented 15. But if you don't do anything about it, or if you don't know how to interact, some police department, they, they actually aggravate the situation. Instead of having 15 suicides, they cause a whole bunch more. So, it's the attitude, is how you guys carry out your responsibility. Your, you know, the school resource office, the same thing. You build relationships. You talk this guy who has AR-15s into wanting to work with you. And I think that's a big difference. So, I think with the compliment, the people you have, the attitude you have. And you're going to work with communities, citizens. The community takes the same attitude. And I like what you're saying. It's a fact, because it reflects on what our attitude is, the city and the citizens. We need to be vigilant. We can't say that while we prevented 11 cases. We want to make sure we have no cases, zero cases. And to do that, we need to have conversations. We need to have people reminding us. We need to make sure that we provide more, you know, this kind of relationship and resources. Also, I want to thank the community for bringing us up. We have a conversation, discussion. How are we going to do it? It's not going to be easy. It's going to be depending on your officers, you know? Which side of the bed they get up in the morning, right? How do you treat them, right? How does the community support them? And all this is part of the situation. And the community is changing. It's even more surprisingly. Even though with all the new, new people coming to our city, we are able to maintain, sustain this. It takes a lot of effort. That's why we need to be, you know, well, working, you know, diligently to work this. So, I think it's important to keep that in mind, exploring opportunities. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing. You know, I told many times, Bellevue's public safety is number one, and of police and fire, and obviously, the other departments, human services, is our best in the, in the country. It's our best, unquestionably. So, I appreciate what you're doing. Let's keep looking at how we can make a better, how we can sustain this, and how we can move forward. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the community as well for bringing this up. I learned so much about what we're doing in our city, and that we're actually regional leaders that are emulated by other cities around us. And I'm very proud of the work that we're doing, and I'm glad to hear that we're always moving forward, looking at what we can do more. I asked you this morning if a community member wanted to get involved, what the avenues were for public involvement, engagement. Can you tell us?
Yes. So, what you can do is call my office at 425-452-43. Seriously. The advisory councils, the way we build our advisory councils from within our group, they're recruiting. And so, we have charter, all the groups have been chartered, and there's rules on how to onboard people. But if people are looking to get involved with the police department, actually, seriously, call my office, and, or I'm all over the, you know, website and everything else. Just send me an email, and we'll get you hooked up.
And what are the different, what are the different commissions that are?
So, we have six advisory councils to the chief that are based on race, ethnicity, and faith-based groups. So, I have an African-American advisory council, a Latino/Latina advisory council, Muslim advisory council, Asian Pacific Islander Council, and an interfaith council. That's six, right?
That's five.
And who am I, this?
That's five.
And the LGBTQI team, which is meeting right now across the hallway.
Okay.
And we are looking to expand those advisory councils to include Eastern European and a student advisory council. We're also going to be creating, kind of breaking off from the API, an Indian advisory council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have the opportunity tonight to kind of reaffirm our city's commitment to firearm safety, if we would like to do a proclamation. So, I'll entertain a motion to read a proclamation.
I move that we approve a proclamation for firearm and community safety this evening?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I'm going to go ahead and read it. It was drafted for us tonight. Whereas firearm violence affects communities throughout the country, and protecting public safety in Bellevue is among the city council's highest values. And whereas the city of Bellevue is strongly committed to a holistic, strategic, and coordinated approach to community safety. And whereas we recognize the ongoing need to educate youth, families, and vulnerable populations about firearm violence and suicide. And whereas the Bellevue Police Department proactively leads education and outreach on the responsible use and storage of firearms, enforces laws, and works hard to keep firearms out of the wrong hands. And whereas we strongly support active partnerships with community groups, service providers, the Bellevue School District, and other law enforcement agencies. Now, therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim firearm safety an ongoing matter of high importance. We pledge to continue to proactively address it through communications, education, partnerships, and law enforcement outreach. We also encourage all residents to support these efforts to eliminate the tragic effects of firearm violence. So, if we could do maybe a picture, I think we have some community members here today who would like to accept the proclamation.
Can we give a round of applause?
Thank you. Do you have somebody who would like to accept the proclamation, who's been a leader in this effort?
Could be more than.
And police? Oh, pardon. And municipal. Put the proclamation receiver in chief.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers.
...of 2019. And this levy provides funds for the fire department's CARES Mobile Integrated Health Unit and Basic Life Services. This evening, staff will provide greater detail of what the levy funds will pay for. And tonight, we are seeking council direction to prepare budget appropriation ordinance for the additional dollars and staffing that it will pay for, which is all supported by the levy. Joining us this evening is our Fire Chief Jay Hagan, as well Fire Battalion Chief Dave Besties, and Natasha Grossman, our Fire CARES Program Coordinator. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the chief for this good news story.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Manager Miyaki, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to brief you tonight on a proposal to add staff to the EMS division of the Bellevue Fire Department. On our agenda tonight, I'd like to explain to you about the King County Medic One Levy and additional dollars that are headed to the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue Fire Department, talk about our CARES program, and some proposed adds, and also, some personnel enhancements in our BLS division. Counsel, this evening, the fire department is seeking your advice and your direction, specifically about adding 7.5 FTEs to the fire department budget in the EMS division. Before I dive into the background, I would just like to point out that the King County Medic One Levy was a couple of years' worth of work, a couple years' worth of meetings. And Councilmember Jennifer Robertson was a voting member on that committee, put a ton of work into it, and served on that committee. And we have an additional $1.1 million coming to Bellevue. That's over the funds that we had last year. About 20% of the fire department budget is supported through this levy. And she was also joined with, I guess, the rest of Team Bellevue, Joyce Nichols, sitting behind me to my left from our intergovernmental office, as well as Battalion Chief Dave Besties sitting to my left. So, I'd really like to thank Team Bellevue for some excellent work that's allowing us to grow our program. Thank you. We have an opportunity here to strategically appropriate new revenue where it can be most effective. You heard me mention that we have 1.1 additional dollars for this work. 640,000 of those dollars are for our Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program. That's our Bellevue Fire Department CARES Program, which consists of our CARES 101 Response Unit, and our Masters of Social Work students, several of which you see sitting behind me in the red coats. $461,000 is earmarked for additions to our BLS, that's Basic Life Support Program. And I'd really like to make a special emphasis that everything you're going to hear about this evening is revenue-backed, and these funds do come from the King County Medic One Levy, which passed recently with an 80% yes rate. These funds are dedicated to the work of EMS, and they are available immediately. In fact, available as soon as we can process the contract, which we just received in the mail today. Specifically, there's an opportunity to invest in two places, our CARES program and the administrative support that helps our BLS capability. These are the day-to-day 911 calls that our firefighters respond to. I'd like to show you this slide just to illustrate that the light blue EMS line on that slide shows the number of fire department employees in that division. And this slide simply shows you the divisions of the fire department, and where our personnel are distributed, to give you an idea that we're adding these positions to an already existing count of 52 today. To dive in a little bit on the background of EMS, EMS stands for Emergency Medical, and that handles all of our ALS resources. So, that's our firefighter paramedics. We have four ALS units, two in Bellevue, two in East King County. So, we handle from the shore of Mercer Island all the way to the border with Kidattas County. It handles all of our medical supplies, procurement, and equipment, supervises our CARES program, manages our data and QI processes, and liaises with our outside stakeholders. For example, our medical control at Overlake Hospital, our arrangement with TriMed Ambulance, our neighboring ALS providers, and the King County Medic One staff. It also supports our peer support program, which handles and watches out for the mental health needs of our first responders. At this time, I'd like to draw your attention to our CARES Program Manager, Natasha Grossman, who's sitting to my left. Natasha?
Thank you. Just to be back again to give you a little bit of an update on the CARES program. So, to give you just some numbers, last year, we received 529, sorry, 2018, we received 529 new referrals for the program. In 2019, we received 618 new referrals for the program. And just to give you a little bit about sort of who we're seeing, in 2019, 35% of those referrals were for somebody who was having some sort of a mental health or behavioral health issue. 10% of those people were unhoused, and 12% of those people were dealing with some sort of a substance use disorder issue. So, we continue to work with a lot of different folks, and to receive referrals from different departments. So, we're, we're to continue to work with police and fire, but we've also received referrals regularly from code compliance, from our mediation and conflict resolution services. Service First will often call us when they have somebody at the desk that they feel like would benefit from our, from our help. And we've also been working with our new homelessness outreach coordinator to sort of integrate the work that we're doing, and try to figure out how we can best serve these people, because often, we're working with the same folks. And so, she's started coming to our staff meetings and working with us to make sure we're doing the best we can for these folks. So, in the sort of spirit of collaboration, I thought I'd share a success story with you that really talks about how we really worked with regional partners to get some, some significant help for somebody. So, a couple of months ago, Norcom received a call from a woman who called 911, who said she would like help leaving a domestic violence situation that she'd been in for many years. Norcom had police reach out to her, and she was ready to leave then. So, she, they contacted the CARES, not the CARE students, but our professional social workers, who contacted her, made sure that her husband was not at home, was not going to be home, and went to the home. She was there with her three children, who are aged between one and five years. She was there with her three children, who are aged between one and five years. She had been in this situation for many years. Her husband had withheld medical attention from the child, her oldest child also refused to let him go to school or get evaluated for cognitive and developmental delays, refused to let her get any kind of mental health care. The apartment was completely blocked out from outside light with blankets on the windows, and all the beds in the house had been moved into the living room, so that he could monitor all of the comings and goings of all of the family. And when he left the house, he would take the keys, her phone, and money, so that she had no opportunity to leave the apartment or get back in if she left. So our CARES social workers went there, helped her get out, packed up her kids, and got her over to Redmond, to our family shelter, we have a family shelter for homeless folks, that's where she wanted to go that night. The next morning, she connected actually with Kent Hayes, who's the homeless outreach coordinator in Redmond. So, and we were working with hand-by-phone and meeting. He then also helped connect her with Mary's Place, which is another shelter in Seattle for families. And we were able to get her a telephone, she didn't have a phone, so that she was able to start coordinating and be in contact with the family on the East Coast, who was ready to receive her. They knew her situation, and they wanted her to come, but they didn't have the finances to get her there. Mary's Place was able to get funding for that, to buy tickets for she and her three children to get on a plane and go to the East Coast and go to her family. And we have continued to support her. She calls us, just to tell us that she's doing great, and that she's happy, and she's safe. And we've continued to give her emotional support and provide information on domestic violence recovery, and also child protective services, because a referral was made based on her husband to CPS, so to learn what kind of services they could actually help her with. So we're really excited about the opportunity to do more work like this, and to be able to serve even more community members and have more people out there. So thank you for the opportunity to share this, and for coming next.
Thank you, Natasha. On this slide, I'd really like to illustrate for you some of the new opportunities we have with some technology, and some of the new work that it presents, that we would hope to engage the new staff with. All King County EMS providers were required to adopt ESO software. This is electronic patient healthcare records. We used to do our medical incident reports by pen, in triplicate, out in the night, the rain, and it was slow, and it was really difficult to share that information. Now, it's a tablet-based program that provides us many opportunities. The Bellevue Fire Department responds to about 20,000 alarms a year, 80% of which are medical in nature. So imagine, if you will, about 16,000 triplicate medical forms stacked on our table here. We didn't have the ability to ask that pile of paper questions and interpret from it. And now, we have this incredible capability to do that, which is offering us the opportunity to make data-driven decisions that has real impacts on patient health and positive outcomes. The other thing I'd like to explain is another software called Operative IQ. This is an asset management software. Similarly, we used to do this by paper, now we do it electronically. We transitioned to this quarter three of 2019, and we use this to track the pain medications that we store and give to patients, EMS supplies, and equipment. A little more on ESO, the three core advantages of this software, it increases the ability and speed of information sharing with our stakeholders. For example, as soon as we enter in the patient's information and connect via the internet, that information is instantly available to the physician and the nurses in the hospital, and they can act on it right then and there. Once we enter your information, because we are HIPAA compliant and protect your information, we have it, we have it forever. So our process is speeded up. As I was mentioning, this ESO program allows us to make data-informed decisions that benefit patient outcomes. Two examples I would offer are influenza, the arrival of influenza in our community, and the severity of it. We can now ask the software system, what are we seeing, how fast are we seeing it, are there trends? We can communicate with our medical leadership at Overlake, and then make treatment decisions based on a 12-hour basis. Like a canary in a coal mine or a tripwire, we're also able to see what happens regarding opiate overdoses or narcotic overdoses. Type, kind, frequency, duration, again, we're able now to coordinate with our medical leadership and adjust on the fly, making decisions that has positive impacts. Regarding Operative IQ, this is a new asset-tracking software. We use it to track and store the pain medications that we give people that we see in the back of our aid cars and medic units. We also use it for SCBA, that's about a $500 acronym that stands for Self-contained Breathing Apparatus. This is the air tanks that we wear on our back when we go into hazardous atmospheres or smoky house fires. The three distinct advantages of Operative IQ are that we can track ordering across different budget areas, we can reduce workload by dropshipping supplies directly to the place where they're needed. We used to have to central order, break bulk, repackage, and deliver, so that represents a nice efficiency, and it helps us with inventory control, because we can set minimum and maximum amounts of supplies, auto-reorder when we need to, and not have to store a bunch of Council, with this slide, I'd like to really dive into what the ask is in this proposal on the CARES side, and then I will follow up with a graphic depiction that will hopefully crystallize it for you. This proposal contains adding one new CARES practicum clinical coordinator. You may remember me saying that we have partnerships with seven colleges and universities, and we have at any given time 14 to 20 Masters in Social Work students that are here in Bellevue, finishing their education, working with people in our community in need, and these are the red coats that you see sitting behind me. Each one of those students requires one hour per week of hands-on, intense supervision over what they're doing, and also following their caseload, being available to answer questions. These students represent 5.5 FTEs that we're essentially getting for free, except it's not exactly free, because we have to make sure they get what they came here for, which is a great education. Right now, Natasha is doing all that supervision. We would ask this new person to help with that, and that frankly is an area we've fallen behind in. We also have the CARES 101 Response Vehicle, and there are three professional social workers assigned to that unit now. They operate two at a time. And so when police or fire find someone in need in our community, they can make a referral to that unit, and if it's during business hours, they just go right out there at that time. We would like to add one additional person to that team for a total of four. That would allow us to expand our service from 10 hours a day, five days a week, to every day of the week. And then we'd like to add a .5 FTE for admin. Right now, the admin load is shared among all the team members, and it's not super-efficient. You heard me mention the professional social workers that staff the CARES 101 Response Vehicle. That program started about two years ago on a short-term grant, and at that time, it was appropriate to have those in LTE status. At this point, I'm requesting that we convert those from LTE to FTE status. Now that the total length of the program is six years, we believe we're seeing gains in the community and need to make that more permanent. This slide just shows graphically what I just presented, and hopefully this will crystallize it for you. Natasha's on the top in the gold. The admin request is on the top in the red. The new practicum coordinator is middle-top on the right in red, although that looks a little purple in this room. And that practicum coordinator would supervise the 14 to 20 students who are depicted in green. The CARES 101 Response Unit is inside the yellow circle. Right now, we have three, we'd like to add one more. And then on the bottom of the slide, you'll see the five days a week migrating to the seven days a week. For the next two slides, I'd like to draw your attention to my EMS Commander, Dave Bestie. Dave?
Thank you, Chief. So we'd like to add two additional FTEs to the EMS Division, in addition to the CARES program. The first one is an IT support person. This person will manage the software and hardware devices that we have throughout the department. This includes all our tablets, all our software that integrates with each other, and then liaises with the outside stakeholders and inside stakeholders. This includes the IT Division, the radio shop within the city, and then also all the technology devices, the ESO software, the Operative IQ software, how they integrate with the hardware devices, and how they interconnect, takes a huge commitment in trying to get everybody to talk to one another. Second position, and that's a civilian position, by the way. Second position would be a firefighter. That firefighter's in charge, will be in charge of purchasing all EMS supplies and equipment, or excuse me, supplies and medications, and then also doing our QI clinical review to help improve our patient outcomes, and making sure we're doing everything right out in the field. Thank you, Chief.
Give you that, one more.
Oh, thank you. So this slide shows the EMS Division. You'll notice that in red is the new IT Support Division, which is the civilian position, and the EMS firefighter is on the right in the red, all reporting up through, I'm in the middle at the top there.
Council, I'd like to reiterate that everything you've heard this evening is revenue-backed. We have these funds guaranteed through 2025, and the Fire Department is seeking council's direction to move forward with this proposal to appropriate additional budget from the King County Medic One levy to include an increase of the 7.5 FTEs. And with that, I'd love to entertain your questions or your comments.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. I want to thank Councilmember Robertson for your work on the levy. Would you like to start?
Sure.
So this is exciting to see the levy pass and then come to start implementing. So just to give my colleagues a little background, when we started planning the levy, when the levy committee started, there was a risk that, we weren't even thinking about our BLS being increased, there was a risk that our BLS funding would be cut. The CARES was a pilot program that Bellevue was part of, and we saw such great results from it, we advocated for the county to fund it county-wide with the EMS levy. So not only did we not get our BLS cut, but we got increases to that, so that we were, made sure that we can continue to provide those services, and CARE went, the CARES program went county-wide, which is going to, and as you heard from Chief Mylett before this presentation, it's part of the prevention of violence in our community, as well as helping people who might be falling through the cracks of mental health crisis or addiction crisis, or, and it also helps preserve resources, because it provides services to people who might be frequent 911 callers. I remember hearing a story when I was working on this about a woman who was older, and I mean, she would call 911 for, "I dropped the TV remote, and I can't pick it up." I mean, things like that, where the CARES program can get in there, and they can help connect her with resources, so that it's a lot more cost-effective, and it provides a better quality of life for the people who are getting the services. So I'm just really thrilled, and I just want to give a huge shout-out to EMS Commander Bestie and to Joyce Nichols, our Government Affairs Director, because they were giving me credit, but let me tell you, they did so much work and helped the city really be effective on that committee and make the EMS levy better, not just for Bellevue, but for the whole county. I mean, this is going to provide better services, EMS services, and the CARES services to every resident of King County, and I just couldn't be prouder of the role our department played in that. So I don't have any questions, but when we are finished with discussion, I would love to make the motion to bring this back on consent. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Yeah, we just finished talking to the, at least, chief. Obviously, you know, safety, public safety is number one for the city, and you're part of the team that makes it great, wonderful, the city. And it demonstrated by, you know, the things that you do with your care team, go to somebody's house, take care of the family, I mean, that's all part of the overall safety thing. So I have no problem supporting this, especially when the money is coming from EMS levy, you know, so, but I do have a couple of questions. One is, well, actually, maybe three, is a comment, the first one is, you're changing from paper record system to electronic. I'm just surprised, how come it hasn't been done sooner than now? Is it the money, or it's not available? It should have been done sooner. It's better later than never, but it's just a question.
Agreed. The county, we wanted a system that was county-wide, so all the agencies, with the exception of Still Call Me Pass, which is split between Kidattas County and King County, are now on ESO. The data's available to King County. It began about four years ago. We had, there was issues with the technology before, that was struggles for the new people that, the innovators, so we let them work out the bugs, and then we were able to come on along with Seattle in 2018, '17 and '18, and get all of the systems engaged.
Sure, so that's a good reason, because now you would not have to worry about the bugs and other system not being compatible. Okay. The second question I have is, 2025, the money goes to, so what happens after 2025?
So we have a, this has been a six-year levy. It started in 1979, I believe, was the first levy. It's continually passed, sometimes with struggles, but we've always passed it. We've always had a good passing rate. In 2025, the levy will be over, and then we'll go through the process again for a revote to extend the levy for another six years.
So you anticipate this will continue?
Yes.
However, I think if the system works well, that we really need it, why do we have to wait for levy to pass? Don't we want it ourselves anyway, without having to depend on other sources of money?
Agreed. We, as the chief mentioned, we get 20% of our budget from the levy, so it's a huge advocate for us.
Right.
And the six-year levy, you could do a three- or a 10-year. What they found is a 10-year, trying to project out what the costs are going to be, is difficult, and then a three-year is a little short, that's why they go with the six-year. And I believe that's legislative of how many years you can do the levy.
Well, I'm saying is that if it's important to us, it should be a basic budget for us to consider, rather than depend on the levy, right? It's going to be part of our, the levy is good. When we, when we need special things, we haven't considered. Get us jump-started, you know? Especially if you require regional support, okay? But if it's something that we actually find reason to do, you should be talking to the council, to the city manager, this is our budget item to be discussed. Does it meet that bar, or maybe it doesn't?
I would agree with you that it's extremely important that we have these ALS, BLS, and Mobile Integrated Healthcare Services in our community, however they're funded.
Yes.
And that I will definitely take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question, I forgot. This IT person you're hiring, doesn't our IT, our own general IT system can support that? Why do you need to have a separate IT person to do it?
Because these are devices that are used for medical, emergency medical purposes. We, if one breaks or one stops working, we have to drop what we're doing and go, and IT just doesn't have that support to be able to do that.
So you need to have a dedicated resource, expertise?
Yes, and we will, yes, and we'll coordinate with IT on working together, but they just don't have the resources to be able to drop everything, run out in the field.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Braxdale.
My comment is short. I'm excited about this use of funds, and especially the technology, so looking forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stokes?
This is what he said. I do think that, understand that, like most of these levies, which are taxes, they are, they have a certain time period, and we go through that all the time. That's the way we do it. I don't, I would not support and don't see the necessity for Bellevue to raise taxes to pay for this, because we're part of a region-wide system, so I think it's an appropriate way to go, and hopefully, we can keep up the record, because we do, you do great service. I think people in the whole county understand that, and that's one we can get those things through. But it's a great program, and we really have put a lot of thought into this, and it's just amazing, and I think it will help us a lot, so appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn?
Yeah, so thank you very much. I can tell that you took a lot of thought in determining how best to use the money, right? Because I can, I am assuming that there are other things that the money could be used for, but as you look at it, I appreciate the fact that, from what I could tell, you looked at two different parts, right? One is, how do we better deliver services? So the fact that we're now going to be able to have the Bellevue CARES on the weekends, because people don't have crises only on weekdays. And then the, making the department more efficient, and looking at technology, especially the real-time data for decision-making, I really applaud you for doing that, because, you know, I remember when we were talking about 5G implementation last year, we talked about the fact that part of this is being able to feed data in, so that the doctor at the hospital knows what's going on before we get there. The part that, and also the predictive nature, so what I also saw is that we're now going to be able to do some prediction- to be able to do some predictions around potentially opioid crises and, and who, what kind of concerns might be in our community. I did have one question. You made a comment that of the 20,000 calls, 20% was medical. So that means 80% is something else, and so...
I'm sorry, if I misstated that.
Oh, maybe I missed, maybe I missed.
80% is medical in nature.
Okay.
Of that 20,000, 80%, the vast majority is medical in nature.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry if I misstated that.
I figured that's probably, I wrote the note backwards, because I was trying to figure out what that looks like. I'm really excited about this, because to me, just like earlier, we talked about the fact that when we're out in the community, we're building relationships, so hopefully folks then can be tied to other human services or spending time in our community instead of making calls to our Bellevue CARES. So thank you.
Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Natasha, Vitalian, Chief Bestie, and Chief Hagan, thanks so much. I echo the comments about the real thoughtful, I think, process you went through in terms of getting the best, you know, bang for our buck here of the, of the, over what, $1 million here, and I really appreciate the great work that Joyce Nichols and Councilmember Robertson did on this as well to, to make this a reality and get to the point where we can hire these additional FTEs or convert LTEs to FTEs. I mean, I think all my colleagues agree that, and I'm so glad they're here too, that members of the CARES programs here, because you do such tremendous work in our community, and it's such an important part to free up the Fire Department and others from doing additional work. So it's, it's, it's a great program. Glad to see that it's highlighted here. We're going to put more resources and effort into it, as well as the basic life and the IT support as well. You know, I haven't gone on a couple of runs with, with folks in the Fire Department. I know it's not always, sometimes it seems like it might be quicker just to quickly write something down than actually typing it into the, to the iPad or the remote device, but like you said, there's so many benefits from it, and I'm glad to hear that we're going to get so much more data-driven in terms of our decision-making, in terms of, you know, seeing the trends and just being more responsive. And the fact that you can get that data to that physician and get them prepped and ready to go as soon as that patient arrives at the, you know, overlay or wherever you're, they're taking them to is, is a real great benefit and just all good news all around. So thank you for the presentation.
So these are our tax dollars at work, and it's not always obvious to see where that money goes. It's wonderful to see that, you know, all the things that we really value in the city, how it's getting paid for, and it's not going to increase our city budget at all to cover these asks. So I want to really thank you so much, Ms. Grossman, for all you have done with your work and all our social worker crew back here. I have a feeling that the people that have been working half-time, that were hoping to go full-time, have probably already been working full-time but getting paid half-time. So I really value the work that you do. I've worked in home care for over 20 years on the east side, and there's just nothing more effective than going into a person's home and seeing what the limitations and the challenges are that they face. And you're, you're serving the most difficult people to serve in the work that you do, and you're doing it so successfully. Again, it's a program that puts Bellevue on the map. So thank you for this, and I will support the motion if Councilmember Robertson would like to ask for a motion to appropriate the additional funds.
Thank you. I move that, that we prepare, that we direct staff to prepare an ordinance to appropriate additional budget from the EMS levy and to authorize the positions in the CARES Mobile Integrated Health Unit, 5.5 FTEs, and basic life services to FTEs for a total of seven and a half FTE positions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Wonderful. So thank you. We're going to add one more thing to this agenda, so don't get up yet, but you may leave.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Thank you.
So our city manager has a report on the, some awards that I believe Councilmembers Zahn and Lee may have picked up when they were in DC. So I'll let you introduce this.
Members, again, we continue to receive these awards in our digital cities and for information technology advances in the city. Versus me telling you about it, I want to give our Chief Information Officer, Sabra Snyder, the opportunity to, to share with the council what the awards was all about and, and talk a little bit about the history of us getting them as well, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. In 2019, I'm proud to let you know that Bellevue once again received an award from the Center for Digital Government. In 2019, it was third place, and that will mark the third year that we've been in the top four. The year before, you may recall, it was first, so we're trying to work our way back up. This is a fairly prestigious award, and our population category for this award is 125,000 to 249,000 in terms of city population. So we're kind of at the low end of that range as well. In 2019, they changed the awards a little bit so that they focused on cities that had leadership alignment. So that basically means that their technology work is aligned with the work of their city leadership, and in this case, it would be aligned with the work of your vision. Citizen-centric, so thinking about government experience and really putting the residents and stakeholders in the center of what we do. Efficient, data-driven, which is something you just talked about with Fire Chief Hagan. Data governance, the utilization of data, I know that's a passion area for some of you at the table. And information security, which is something we've been working very hard at in the IT Department and across the city. Resiliency, so our ability to recover in a disaster and have continuity of operations, how we treat staff across the city, whether or not we're connected and helping to bridge the digital divide, whether or not we're innovative, an important core value in the city of Bellevue, and last but not least, whether or not we follow IT best practices. So every year, this is loosely a 50-page application that details our work across all these areas, and we compete across the nation with other cities for this award. So a couple of things we highlighted in the 50-page application, and I won't talk about all of it, but some things that might be especially of interest to you all. Progress toward achieving the council's smart city vision. So we talked in the award application about some of the things that Fire Chief Hagan just highlighted in terms of what we're doing around smart cities and public safety. The master license agreement work that you all were integral to in deploying small cell and getting small cell licensed with the new FCC regulations last year. The work we've done in putting free public Wi-Fi in King County Housing Authority to help bridge the digital divide across the city. We highlighted another council value and vision across those award applications, and that was our regional partnerships. And Bellevue is very proud of our work with the East City Gov Alliance and My Building Permit, and also the Community Connectivity Consortium, the Fiber Consortium that we are a part of, that builds the fiber ring around the lake. We highlighted a number of things under your priority of technology to improve customer service, and that included the illegal fireworks reporting application that you may remember got a lot of press last summer. The Building Bellevue app, same thing, that was a fairly high-profile. Continued enhancements to My Building Permit, letting the development services go 100% paperless. A bunch of website enhancements that were supported by this body. And one of the things we highlight every year, but in particular this past year in this application, is the collaboration across the city. And I say this every year, that I get the honor of presenting this award to you all, but this is not just the IT Department doing all of this work, it's truly the IT Department partnering with everyone, my colleagues in this room, and also working very hard with all of them to achieve your vision. So thank you to Councilmember Lee and Councilmembers Zahn for accepting the award on behalf of Bellevue. I have it with me this evening, if anyone would like to see it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmembers Zahn and Lee, do you want to make a comment?
Sure.
I've been going to naturally cities all 20 years, and Bellevue has always been the best kept secret, a hidden gem. And, but recently, I'm really happy that we are becoming discovered. And I think that's one of the things that is not that well-known, because it's something that you've done as a city for over, for a long time. I mean, this doesn't happen overnight. It's built up. It was infrastructure, what you've done, it's across the board, and, you know, you don't save anybody's life and nobody gets drunk, they discover that you did something. But it's something that's making it efficient, collaborative, regional, that has consequences over time, you know, in the future. So I think this is really a good thing. The second thing is that the competition is very tough. You know, as I mentioned, we're in the lower bottom of the whole cat class, and there's some major big cities competing there. They are the ones that, you know, have the resources, are better known, basically. I don't know how maybe strong they are in terms of the actual thing we do, but, you know, it's a question of just having some exposure, and I think you're making a real good pathway. You know, we're going to work our way up there. Many cities I notice, you know, have done that. They've just been there consistently, and other cities get interested, and they have better ways, you know, to, to teach us. We have something to learn as well. This is a work in progress. So I really want to compliment our staff for using this as a process of not just learning from others, doing ourselves, letting other people to emulate, but it's really a process we all move higher to the better place where we all do. So I really appreciate Janice, Councilmember Zahn, and I being there and being recognized, and we hope that we can continue this. And our goal is to get to number one. So, Janice, thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, so thank you. Well, I went last year, and we did get actually quite a nice prize for being number one, and so it's good that we are still in it with number three, because I echo Councilmember Lee that there is a lot of competition, because other cities are also doing this work. And I really think that for Bellevue, it's about setting the right IT culture that is very holistic, where departments are coming together and seeing the benefit to the city and our fiscal responsibility to be as digital as possible. It allows our community from the outside to be able to get access into what we're doing and understand, so I think that's really important. I guess my question would be, you know, at the end of, well, this would be in November of 2020, we'll be there again, so what are some of our strategies to continue to be more and more of a digital city? Are there some new things that we're going to be focused on this year that we haven't done in the past?
There are some things that we've been emphasizing and expanding, certainly starting this year. One of those things is our data analytics program, which again, you heard a little bit about the work that FIRE is doing, and most of that work right now is internal. So we've been partnering on a lot of departments that want to share data with each other but don't have easy avenues to do that yet. And that work has really taken off, and in part in support of the smart cities work, but in part just supportive of good operations. Another thing that we are thinking a lot about and trying to figure out how we want to leverage is robotic process automation. So some of the tasks that we do routinely that we could put into code and, and create and streamline efficiencies. So how we, how we generally innovate in areas like that is we'll run a pilot or two, learn from that, and then try to operationalize those programs. So in the case of the data analytics, we've run the pilots and we're operationalizing now. In the case of RPA, robotic process automation, we're working on the pilots this year, and then we'll figure out whether or not it's something we want to turn into operations.
I love that. One thing too is I think that GIS is an area that we can do more with in terms of really visually understanding the data and what's happening in our community. So I'd encourage that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
One question. First, Sabra, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're absolutely right, it's, it's a team effort, but still, congratulations. I'm just kind of curious, because we had, Councilmember Lee had mentioned the company that we keep here in the top three or top four, just what are the cities that are popping up here in terms of that, that top four, top five?
I was trying to think when Councilmember Lee was talking about the Florida city that we sat next to, because we have a friendly rivalry now. When we, when we won first, we beat them out. They had been first the year before, and this year they were second. And I think it's Paso Robles, does that sound right? Do you remember the...
That's kind of forney, isn't it?
Is that? I'll get back to you.
No problem. Okay, great. And I heard the mayor was actually going to attend that next, or this year, and she doesn't want to pick up a third place, so pressure is on.
Understood. We will try to deliver that.
Anything that we can do to support for the support, because I think as you've heard here, there's a lot of support, you know, to further the great work that we're doing from an IT perspective. It's just making the city stronger, faster, and anything we do to help support, please let us know.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Councilmember Stokes, were you, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I just, and Deputy Mayor just said it. I think, I want you to know, any, tell us anything we can do to help support it, because we want to be number one, so that's good. Seriously, that's, that's amazing, and I think it's good to get the report and understand what we're doing and relate to other cities, and I think it, it's encouraging. It's encouraging the council and the staff and to the, to the community to see these things. So we need to let people know more about this and what the, what the real impact that is. But I think it just really makes us want to keep being better, and you're leading it. Thank you.
Sabra, is there an opportunity to implement blockchain technology in any of the, the work that we're doing in the city in terms of licensing or just data management?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. We continue to kind of research and watch that technology, and what I'm seeing across other governments is it's just not quite mature enough for some of the work that, that government does. But I expect that to change and change rapidly. So it's definitely something that we continue to watch and try to stay abreast of some of the pilots that are going on.
I know that Bellevue is kind of a leader in, in developing the technology and then also utilizing it, and I do know some companies who are looking for pilot projects. So if I can connect you, I'd love to do that.
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Barksdale.
Congratulations. This holds a special, special place with me, just as a fellow techie. So just really proud of the work that you all are doing. Those are some serious criteria, I recognize, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned. We will, we'll meet in the council chambers for the regular session at 8:00. I'm going to call to order the regular session of the Bellevue City Council for Tuesday, January 21, 2020. We'll start with the call of order. Call to order? Roll call, sorry. Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Present.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Councilmember Zahn?
Here.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to have written oral communications and, pardon?
Roll, flag salute.
Oh, I sure did. Mayor, I mean, former Mayor Stokes, would you do the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll move on to communications. The time allowed shall not exceed 30 minutes, and speakers will be called in order from the sign-up sheet. If the number of speakers signed up to speak will exceed the 30-minute period, I'm authorized to give preference to the people speaking on items that are on the meeting's agenda or anticipated to come up on the agenda within a one-month period and/or to persons who have not spoken to council in the last quarter. A maximum of three persons are permitted to speak to each side of any topic. Can you tell me what our list looks like tonight?
We have five speakers this evening, and two of the speakers who just signed up are actually on the Park Point PUD. I believe you have some additional language to read about.
Okay, if you're here to comment on the Park Point PUD, that application is currently being evaluated by the city's Development Services Department and is not before the council. If it were to come before the council at a later time, it would be as an appeal of the city hearing examiner's decision. The council would then only be able to consider what is within the record created before the... what is within the record created before the hearing examiner and not any comments presented to the council today. In order for your comments to be considered at this time as part of the permit evaluation process, you should provide them to the Development Services Department. And is there an easy way to explain how, how they do that?
They, if they email the city clerk, I can send them the contact information for the Development Services Director, but it's also on the city website.
And what's the email for the city clerk?
Cityclerk@bellevuea.gov.
Okay, so we will not be hearing any comments on the Park Point PUD. So that leaves our comments to...
So we have three speakers then, and the first one is Krista Hammer.
Okay, Krista, welcome.
Good evening, council. Is this working?
The one up there is also.
I'll do this one. Good evening, council. My name is Krista Hammer, and I am a Bellevue parent and also the advocacy chair for the International School PTSA. My younger son attended Cherrycrest and is now a junior at International School, and my older son attended Cherrycrest, Odell, Samamish, and is now in college in Los Angeles. As a parent, I can see that the current public health crisis caused by gun violence is taking an emotional toll on our kids. My sons are both on alert for anything out of the ordinary at their schools and in the community, and this impacts them every day. There was an incident this fall where my younger son called the police to International after he observed someone enter the campus that he felt was a threat. I don't have time to provide the details, but after the incident, he told me, "Mom, we are scared, and we shouldn't have to be scared at school that we might be shot." As we are all aware, things don't always turn out well, and we know that there have been school shootings in our state, unintentional gun deaths, and also youth suicides by firearm. The statistics are upsetting, which is why the Washington State PTA recognizes gun violence as a threat to the mental and physical well-being of children and youth. As the PTSA's advocacy chair at International, I attended the Washington State PTA's Legislative Assembly this fall. At this two-day event, PTA members from across Washington came together to vote on urgent priorities. One of the top five current legislative priorities for the council members is preventing gun violence, and I have copies for you of that priority sheet. The priority sheet provides statistics on gun violence in our state, and it calls for responsible policies that can prevent children from accessing firearms, as well as other proposals to protect our children and families. The state PTA also has a long-term resolution on gun violence prevention and safety, and I have a copy for that for you as well. As a parent and PTA member, I support actions that you, as a council, can take to protect Bellevue students, children, and families from firearm violence, and I hope that with reasonable and responsible proactive steps, we can create a safer community in Bellevue. And I thank you for your resolution that you passed, and I liked Councilmember Barksdale's comments asking for data, and I liked Councilmember Lee's insightful comment about the importance of having tools in place that can then be used so effectively. And I also like the general proactive approach that everyone was talking about, and I've always been really proud to live in Bellevue. And I think that we generally do a really great job. We have intelligent people, and we all seem to work together. And so I've been really impressed with Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to provide the handouts over here to Charmaine, that would be great.
The next speaker is Peggy Albin.
Ms. Albin?
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager, and city staff. My name is Peggy Albin. Together with four other Bellevue residents, over the last six months, we met with you and took your suggestions with ours to create a firearm safety priority list of 10 actions we urge you to enact. We then collected 231 signatures and supported these measures. The signers represent a diverse cross-section of people, including students, parents, grandparents, residents, business owners, people who live, work, and visit our city. We want to thank you, each of you, for listening to us and taking our concerns seriously, and we especially want to thank Nathan McComman for the staff presentation at the study session tonight. Bellevue's especially, let's see, in regards to our firearm safety issues. It fulfilled, the study session covered some of the things that we had on our list, as you know. It fulfilled several actions on our list regarding educating youth, families, and vulnerable populations about firearm violence and suicide. It is a framework to begin further efforts on firearm safety. These are the remaining actions we now urge you to adopt. One, form a citizens advisory group or commission to develop gun safety and gun violence prevention strategies. Two, actively support Washington State firearm safety legislation, such as SB 6077, limiting high-capacity magazines to 10 rounds, and Senate Bill 6294 that requires training in the use of a firearm prior to issuing a concealed pistol license. We would also like to see you support legislation that extends protection from firearms in learning centers, libraries, and parks. Three, we would like to see you include social justice topics at the upcoming Council Vision Retreat with an emphasis on firearm safety. In addition, we would like the city to present further in-depth statistics to the council and citizens, including specifics on the following. What are the educational and community outreach programs to the public on firearm safety? When are they held? Where are they held? How many attendees or Bellevue residents were served? Who attends? How is publicity managed? In regard to gun locks and gun safes, how many are distributed? To whom? In what zip codes? How much ammo waste do local firearm ranges produce? What rules govern disposal?
Ms. Albin, you're out of time, so would you like to submit that in writing to the council, and then we can...
I'll clean this up, because I had to revise it since we covered so much stuff earlier this evening in the earlier session. Anyway, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
The final speaker would be April Shentrop.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and all city council members. My name is April Shentrop. My husband and I relocated to Bellevue after our older daughter Carmen was murdered in the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting on Valentine's Day 2018 in Parkland, Florida. We previously planned to move here after Carmen began her new life at U-Dub. Instead, we moved here because of her death. Parkland, like Bellevue, was considered one of the safest cities within the nation. It had all the stats that looked great: eight-rated schools, low crime stats, and family-friendly amenities. But these stats didn't prevent my daughter, other victims, and the community from the gun violence they experienced with, just within two years ago. Coming to Bellevue has helped us move forward, though, especially tonight's earlier meeting with this council's proclamation to the community pledging to protect and address gun violence, protect our citizens and address gun violence. This is a great first step, and I thank you. I know that some Bellevue schools have school resource officers. That was presented in the presentation today. But they are not in schools full-time, meaning they are not in schools five days a week, like our students and staff. And in addition, not all Bellevue schools have school resource officers. The city and the city council can do more to ensure that all Bellevue students and staff are protected. Other places that our children and families are at risk are firearm-related injuries or death, are our libraries, early learning centers, and parks. Persons carrying firearms are currently allowed in these locations. If you would like to see that all our public places are gun-free zones, I urge you to show your support of Washington's House Bill 1374. Passing this bill at the state level will allow cities such as Bellevue to create and enact their own firearm safety laws. From tonight's earlier presentation, it seems that many of the city's firearm safety practices are helping prevent gun violence in Bellevue. But I encourage the city council to continually ask, is this enough? Can Bellevue do more? Can I do more for this city? Remember that Parkland was once known to be a safe city. Now it is known for having the deadliest high school shooting in America. Please continue taking steps to eliminate gun violence within Bellevue before it's too late. Thank you.
Ms. Shentrop, we are so sorry for your loss, and thank you for converting your energy into making every place in Bellevue safer for everybody.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Do we have any other speakers?
The final speaker is...
Okay. So I was going to take this time to allow our council members to talk about their experiences over the holiday, Martin Luther King Jr. holiday on Monday. We all showed up at different events, and everybody had a different experience. I thought we could talk about it, starting with Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we all remembered Dr. King lived by values of inclusion, equality, education, and service. You know, his urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And we celebrated, you know, his legacy of service in two events that some of the council members and I went to. And one is the planting of trees at Wilburton Community Park. And I know that the mayor spent four hours planting trees, and a lot of other folks, scout people and community groups, and they were all there. And in the afternoon, I attended with some other council members at Factoria Mall on a health fair, which is, you know, involved a lot of organizations that are there, providing the information and actual service and opportunity for people who are in need of those services. And the key is that, as we see the community, when we gather together, the city is providing people from all over the world, in a way. The city has become very, very diverse over the years. But Bellevue has always been a very welcoming community, no matter where they come from. I've been here over 50 years, and I felt the way I did, as I see today, no matter where you are from, people are very welcome. And people here, living here, are very welcoming. However, you know, by having people who are different, we need to be able to work and learn how to share the same common goals and same effort working together. Just comes to my mind, Dr. King said, "We, we can, we, 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 let's see, we can fly like a bird, we can swim like a fish, but we're still learning how to walk like brothers." So I think in order to really have, live on the inclusivity and working together, we need to be engaged with each other. We need to be working on projects together, planting trees, sharing informations, helping each other, and the things that's important to all of us, to the community. So I think we got to know each other, work together, and help each other. So I really want to, again, emphasize the importance of remembering what Dr. King has done and what we have to follow to model what his life was to all of us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I was also at Factoria Mall, and it's a black sorority that has, puts on the health fair, and we've been doing that with them for a number of years. Had a great group, some youth songs and ceremony and just celebration. It was, it was a great event, and a great place to be with people coming in and out. What's important about it, and what's important about for me, is that I think it's, it's an opportunity to reflect on all the things that Councilmember Lee said. And in addition to that, I think what it really does is give us a chance to say, are we doing enough? And what do we need to do? What is, you know, it was not all about just coming together and working together. It's how do we solve really serious issues in the community? And we're not there yet. I was in law school in DC in 1963, and I participated in the march, and I had a dream speech. I have a dream speech, and not a lot of work on such issues in my former life from council here. And I think what we, it was an opportunity to really celebrate all the good things, bringing together, and yes, Bellevue welcomes the world, it averses our strength. But it also, I think, makes us look at the hard parts, and that's something we still struggle with, is how do we actually put these things in place? And how do we tackle issues like the gun violence? How do we tackle issues that tear the, the community apart? And I think that's what Dr. King was trying to help us do, is figure out how to work together and get across those, so that we don't have, we don't look at people as one race or another race, or all of these other things that divide us, but that we're all one human race, and we need to work together. And I think that was what was, and I think we did a lot of that at the event. And the tree planting is great. It's also recognition that, the connection to, to nature, and it's, it's, it's great to have these, these celebrations. And I just hope that we also look at the underlying aspects of it and realize that what Dr. King was trying to do was get us to a higher level. And the fact that we celebrate that, and particularly in Bellevue, I think is very commendable.
Councilmember Barksdale?
All right. So, so I attended two of the community events. The first one was the event that we had here at City Hall with Azure, who did an amazing job. I enjoyed listening to, to his remarks on his experience in the Seattle School District. And while that may be Seattle School District, I think, you know, we just have to make sure that we're not doing the same thing in Bellevue, and that we're doing right by our students, for all of our students. You know, and secondly, I went to the Factoria, the, the event at Factoria Mall. And in my remarks, you know, and I think it's just important to reiterate here that, you know, a large, in large part, we were able to convene in that way because of the work of Dr. King and many other civil rights activists, the life, the, the time, the energy and the life, given their life. And so, you know, it was important to celebrate that progress, and I think it's also important that we continue to make progress and continue to have those tough conversations. And I know that's, you know, difficult, but I think the more that we do that, the more that we learn and, and teach each other, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn?
Yes. So I actually had an opportunity last week when I was at Transportation Research Board in DC to actually go to the MLK Memorial and walk around and really just reflect on the, the words that were etched on the granite. And so I brought that back with me, because I took some pictures while I was there. And so when I was at the Wilburton Park for the tree planting, there were a number of scouts there, and I was with one of the groups of, of Little Boy Scouts. And so we actually talked a little bit about Martin Luther King, what he stood for, showed them some pictures of the memorial. And I read this, this phrase that was etched on one of the, the stones about, "Make a career of humanity, commit yourself to the noble struggle for equal rights. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation for your country, and a finer world to live in." And I think that, you know, those students hopefully get a chance to kind of reflect about what that means. And then later on, I was also at Factoria for the health fair. And what I talked about there was the fact that, you know, Dr. King wasn't only about civil rights, justice. He was also looking at many different types of injustices, and one of those was the environment. So the fact that we actually had tree planting on that day, and we were doing a health fair, I think was very meaningful, because a lot of the inequities over time have been around our health care and public health. So the fact that that was something that we did, and in addition to having the 20 booths about the health care resources, we, we also had a mobile blood, mobile outside, so that people could also donate blood as part of something that they can give back to the community. So I thought it was very meaningful that Bellevue continues to do that. I didn't get the number of years that we've had the health fair, but my, my understanding is it was somewhere in the 20 years or more. So perhaps Councilmember Lee remembers, since he's been here for over 20 years, but very meaningful.
I've been here too long to forget. I've been here too long to forget how many years.
Councilmember Robertson.
No, I'm so proud of this city. We do so much to celebrate our community and the, and the leaders who have made our nation and our community better. However, I didn't go to anything because when you have a parent in their nineties, you can't go six months without seeing them. So I was visiting my parents over the long weekend and so, but I have gone in years past and I echo all the comments of my colleagues. Thank you.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
First of all, wanted to thank staff for putting on so many great events to celebrate the legacy of Martin Luther King. That took a lot of time and effort and it really gave residents an opportunity to understand the, the man, the vision, the dream, and to make a space available for that. I had the pleasure of attending the, the celebration, the health fair at Factoria Mall, like some of my colleagues here. And I wanted just to, per my remarks, just recite this great quote from Dr. King because I think we all know some of the more popular ones or ones that are used more often than not. But this one actually touches on the, the issue of health. And he said, "Of all the forms of inequality and justice in health, is the most shocking and inhuman." So even though he said that decades ago, the inequalities of yesterday certainly continue on today as we deal with new challenges and barriers in healthcare, including lack of access to preventative resources. So what that means is really marginalized, underrepresented communities are less likely to receive that preventative service. According to research on the state of health, or state of health inequalities in the US, racial and ethnic disparities in health have been some of the most persistent disparities over time, even as we progress toward more equality in all other areas. So, so the, it was, it was a special day, Martin Luther King Day of Service, an opportunity really to recognize these disparities and the fact that there's still a lot more work that needs to be done. And let's not forget that the healthcare aspect of it, there might be the most amount of work that needs to be done right there. So it was a great day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So I was really privileged to attend the event here at City Hall. It was, it was very well done and we had, as Councilmember Braxdale said, just a tremendous speaker, somebody from the, a high school senior from the Seattle School District. He's a published author, his name is Azure Savage. And just to kind of highlight something that he brought up, if you're feeling underrepresented and/or marginalized, you're not alone and it's not your fault. So if you feel that way, tell somebody, tell your mom or dad or tell your teacher, tell your coach, tell somebody that can support you in this and, and bring it to their attention because that kind of situation has to change. And if you have nobody else to tell, tell me. Tell the Bellevue City Council because we want to hear about it. And thank you, everybody, for your experiences. Okay, the next item of business is an opportunity for council to take a position on the Bellevue School District's proposition number one.
Mayor?
Yes.
Do you still have that consent calendar?
Oh my goodness, I'm so out of sorts tonight. I'm so sorry. All right, the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. No public hearing, no land use. So, I shall begin again. The next item of business is an opportunity for council to take a position on Bellevue School District's proposition number one. General Obligation Bonds, six hundred and seventy-five million dollars. I will now turn it over to the city clerk who has some procedural information for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, the council has an opportunity to take an official position on the Bellevue School District, number, proposition number one, the general obligations bond. RCW forty-two seventeen A five-five-five prevents the use of public resources for the promotion or opposition to a ballot measure. However, there is a safe harbor clause that allows the council to take an official position. There are certain requirements that need to be met in order to do so. One of those requirements is that the agenda for the meeting include the title and number of the ballot proposition. The other is that members of the public and the council are afforded an equal opportunity to give their expression of an opposing view. Both of those requirements have been satisfied in this case. So this evening, the council will be hearing from pro campaign representatives, Renuka Getchel and Michael Chen. And given that the council just heard the informational briefing from the Bellevue School District last week, there will be no further presentation from the school district or from staff after the pro campaign has given their statement. And also I should mention that no, no campaign has been identified as of the writing of this memo and as of Friday. The council can move to approve Resolution nine-seven-one-six after it hears from the pro campaign and the public or it can choose to not take any action at all.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to ask Renuka Getchel and Michael Chen from the pro campaign to come up to the podium and please give the pro statement. You have up to ten minutes total to give your statement.
Well, thank you for having us here today. Really appreciate having the opportunity to have this bond endorsed. My name's Renika Getchel and I am a parent in the Bellevue School District. I have four daughters. My oldest daughter went kindergarten through twelfth grade and is now a sophomore in college in Washington DC. I have twins who are juniors and I have a sixth grader. And when I'm not being a mom, I'm a real estate agent, which gives me firsthand knowledge about how important Bellevue schools are to the people who want to live and work in the city of Bellevue. And I want to just give you a little, I know that you heard from the superintendent and the deputy superintendent last week. I just wanted to give you a little background. I was on the Bellevue Planning Committee over the last eighteen months that looked at the, what the different, different needs were within the district. We were presented, we were presented by different groups that kind of told us what happens in our district. And it's pretty amazing, the type of programs that the Bellevue School District offers. I can tell you that my children, my oldest got into the International School when she was in fifth grade. So I felt pretty fortunate and I thought, oh, I'm, I'm lucky. I think after going through this process, I realized just how many amazing programs there, there are in the entire Bellevue School District and how lucky all the students are in the Bellevue School District to be part of this program. So I just wanted to mention that because I think it is really important that community and the schools are, are really important to the city of Bellevue. In real estate, there's a saying, you know, location, location, location. In recent years, it's schools, schools, location. So I just, thanks.
Thank you, Renika. Okay, Michael?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Michael Chen, a parent of three kids in the Bellevue School District, two older daughters, one at Newport. She's a sophomore, an eighth grader at Taiyi and a sixth grade son at Taiyi as well. So it's been a privilege to serve on this Planning and Capital Facilities Committee. It's been eye-opening. I wish every parent could have this opportunity to get real in-depth knowledge of how their kids' schools work and function, not only the teachers, but the administrative staff behind the teachers. They're really, you know, what really makes the school district what it is, along with staff. Because you could have new buildings, great-looking buildings, state-of-the-art buildings, but without the amazing teachers and staff behind it, you're, you don't have what you have for the Bellevue School District. I would say, you know, you heard from Dr. Duran and Melissa DeVita last week about, you know, the components of the, what's included in the bond. Just to highlight that again, it's, you know, rebuilding three new schools, remodeling and enlarging two high schools, safety measures, as well as planning for the future. And that's, you know, key, it's planning for the future. As a land use planner by trade during the day, I've seen the growth of Bellevue. Been here since ninety-four and I've seen the changes. And it's exciting to see what's ahead for the next thirty, forty, fifty years. And why we're seeking council endorsement of this bond, you know, you've all heard it, you've all stated it last week. Dynamic schools make dynamic communities. And, you know, at the heart of it is great schools and around that, you've got, you know, stronger communities, home values. You've got attracting residents, as Councilmember Lee said, you know, Bellevue is welcoming. And you see that with all school, you know, being the driver, main economic drivers. You're seeing all the businesses come because they want their employees to live and have, you know, a great school system for their kids. Community satisfaction and retaining staff as well. All of those factors surround that, you know, great school mentality. And that's why we're asking for your endorsement tonight.
Thank you. Are there any community members here to speak?
There have been no members signing up either on opposition or in support.
Okay. So we'll open it up for council discussion. You may sit down. Thank you very much. Councilmember Stokes, do you want to start?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure of mine to have worked on bonds and levies for the Bellevue School District since we moved here in nineteen ninety-two. I haven't worked on one in a couple of years, but up to that time. And I've seen this district go through a huge change. And we're talking tonight not about a levy that supports teachers, supports curriculum. We're talking about buildings. We're talking about a bond, bonding for buildings. And I was there when we were at my daughter's elementary school in Woodbridge, warm, safe, and dry. Was there when we went to Bellevue High School and had a redo of Bellevue High School that you look like the same thing. It just kind of cleaned up some of the things underneath the floors. And it came a point where the district and the business community, the, the neighborhood said, "We can do better with housing our students and having better facilities." And that was the watershed event where we decided to, and got together at the school district and, and had a large sixty or seventy people there talking about, "How can we do this better?" And we decided to go to new buildings. A lot of our buildings were built in the old days. They were outside doors, they were kind of California style. We don't live in California, it does rain here. And there was a recognition that, something that I think is very important and, and one of the reasons I think it's important today is that buildings influence and shape outcomes. Yes, we can educate and Bellevue educates its kids remarkably well. And it did that for a long time. Was active on the Bellevue School Foundation for twelve years and continued on committees afterwards. And I know that Bellevue has put on and has always had a great, great schools. But I think they have become better because you have to match, just like this, this is one of the best council chambers and council, city halls anywhere. And I do think it has a great effect on the way the city of Bellevue perceives itself, what Bellevue does. And I've been to other places and, and buildings do make a difference. And it's not just the buildings itself, it's the things that it can deliver in terms of accessibility, in terms of better utilization for the students and better ways to do education now that, that needs more than just, you know, little rooms here, here, and here. It's, and I've seen it at Somerset, I mean Somerset, at Newport High School. And it was built new, I was there when it wasn't new and it was kind of a mess and kind of hard to get around, kind of hard to communicate. It's better, but it's, that school and others have, have changed because the, the number of students in Bellevue has grown. When I was involved for a long time, it was fifteen thousand students, used to be twenty-something back in the old days. And then it, then it, you know, it was a change in the demographics. Then all of a sudden, you have all these new people coming in and it's way over what we used to have. So we have to have new schools. But we can't just build, keep building new schools in different places. We have to go back to those schools and there are some who haven't been completed yet and redone. You have to go back and keep them fresh, keep them new. And that's what's happening. And this is why this is important. And yes, it's a lot of money. I remember at the time when this first came up, freaked everybody out, that was something like, you know, fifty billion. You know, it's just, it's just amazing. And now it's so much more because buildings just cost, it's amazing how much they cost. But what you get out of it and what this district does and what this levy has done is come up with a quality plan and, and effort for buildings and structure and infrastructure that will match and accelerate the education and the excellence of the education. So I, I just think this is a winner all the way around. This community can afford it. It's, it's a very, very small increase, actually, when it comes down to the taxes. And it's well worth it. And this community has always, always supported bonds and levies for the, for the districts and there's no reason to quit doing it now. So I wholeheartedly support this and certainly support the resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you. Madam Mayor. I moved to Bellevue fifty-three years ago for many reasons. But the major reason is, yes, a great school. You know, we came here to want to raise a family. And you find a place like Bellevue, obviously it's a nice place, it's safe, but great school because it's for our future, you know, as growing families, we all want to look at what's the future for our children. And school is, like Mr. Chen said, number one driver for a community economically and otherwise. And I think in all my fifty years, you know, the student body have changed size, increased, decreased, and now it's moving, increasing. But not every family has kids in school. But the Bellevue residents, you know, they support schools, they understand the importance of school, good school. I don't believe there's ever been a school levy that has failed, even for the people who don't have kids in school. I think the majority of them support school levy. So I think it's a good thing, we recognize it. I'm really glad that, you know, when we heard the vision, the presentation from the superintendent last week, articulated the vision, the mission, and the goals you want to accomplish. You know, we, we don't of course just blindly say we'll support everything, you know. And that's the good thing about, again, Bellevue is, we do things that, you know, makes, makes a difference. We justify it. And the thing that is important is, Bellevue is already great in academics, you know, we all recognize that. But there are many other things that need to be recognized, such as social, emotional, non-academic experience, value, how, how do you collaborate, work together? I think these are all the things that are the goals that we need to accomplish. And to do all those things, to accommodate other things, it's growing population. So we're going to go back, more people, so you need to accommodate all these things. And there are many reasons why we need the money. And Councilmember Stokes mentioned, you need building space. But even more important than building is not just the building itself, but the space to allow these things to happen. The space to allow the people to develop the necessary values, how to work together, how to collaborate, how to develop social, emotional, and how to work together to achieve the goals. I believe the school, in the committee, the school has articulated so well in needing the space, I would call it, you know, we, we do that ourselves, place-making or space to make these things happen. So I think it's very well articulated, it's very supported that we do have this new vision, new goals we need to accomplish. And the existing facility cannot handle that adequately, so we need to do that. And I think it's laid out very well. And I believe that we are, you know, in a position to continue to support the number one driver to allow Bellevue to be a place where we are happy to live here still. And people continue to come to Bellevue, honestly. You know, there are some of us that's probably been here just recently. And they come here for the same reason, very same reason. So I would like to see that continue. So as a result, I support the, the bond, you know, the program. And I have confidence that, you know, you will do justice to make sure that money will be well-spent. money will be well spent. Thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale?
So, I agree with what's been said. Education plays a critical role in our community and our society, and our ability to learn and study and teach, and, you know, desire to engage with others in that academic environment is influenced strongly by, you know, the building, the infrastructure that you're in. And what I remember from when the superintendent and deputy superintendent spoke with us, it was, you know, concerns about the safety of the buildings, the seismic code of the building, the, you know, students and portables and lunchrooms that were crowded in. That doesn't sound like fun and a productive work environment conducive to learning. So, I support this, the adoption of this resolution and support of the bond.
Councilmember Zion?
Yes, thank you. You know, our schools, so much matter. And I wanted to highlight a couple of things about what the money buys, because the three rebuilds and adding capacity at two schools. So, my two daughters, we spent 10 years at the International School. And I can tell you that eating lunch in the locker bay, sitting on the floor, is really not the kind of experience we want our kids to have, because there's not enough room in the cafeteria. And when I think about the safety at big picture, where we, it is not a closed school. So, when you think about how you'd actually protect students when you have an open setup in schools, it doesn't really work. So, the fact that this bond includes these safety elements, and a couple of things about adding safety vestibules so that schools can actually have that security go into lockdown if need be, I think is really important, having safety ballards. So, a lot of these best practices around how schools are designed nowadays, that is absolutely needed in a first-class, you know, school district like Bellevue. So, I think those are really important. The other one that I really applaud the school district for doing is actually putting in money for future purchase of land for future growth, because we know that we continue to have a thriving community with more people coming into Bellevue. So, we want to plan for the future when land is a little more affordable than it might be if we choose to buy in five or 10 years' time. So, I think those pieces are important. And then, I wanted to mention that last summer, I was actually invited to participate in a session the school district had when they were crafting the bones of the bond. And they brought in people from the construction community to talk about the plan, and how to best leverage the dollars and what we can build. And so, I applaud the school district for not just internally thinking they know best about how we deliver these projects, but to actually get feedback from the industry so that we can have more confidence that the money that we're actually paying in the bond is actually going to be used in the most fiscally responsible way. So, I really appreciate that. And, you know, what we heard last week is that what we're talking about for an average homeowner is $26. So, when we think about how much we might spend buying, you know, a couple of cups of coffee at Starbucks, it seems like $26 more dollars a year is really, really well invested in our community. So, I support the bond. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Well said. Councilmember Zion. Yeah, so, I've had kids at Bellevue schools for the last 17 years continuously, and have three more years, three and a half more years to go. Two are still at Newport High School. And my freshman is eating lunch outside every day, because there's not enough room for all the kids to eat. It's cold. She's bringing her a warm coat and stuff, because that's where they have room to eat. So, the city's grown, and the great jobs here and the great schools here, and all of the new development has caused more growth. And what we're seeing is, not only do we have empty nesters selling their single-family home to young families, but we have multifamily housing generating a much more higher percentage of school-aged children than it ever has in the past. So, we need more school capacity in Bellevue to serve these kids. We also have a lot of changing programs, from the robotics, to the computers, to, I mean, just a lot of different new things, technology, et cetera, that we need specific space for. So, we need the facilities for the kids. We need the facilities for the new programs, because having a usable, positive, and safe, emphasis on the safe with the safety upgrades for learning is really important for the health of our youth. And as the health of our youth, there goes the health of our community. So, for me, I think, and I think we all agree that good schools are one of the cornerstones of having a great community. And in Bellevue, we're lucky to have both. So, I think it's necessary, and it's good for Bellevue School District, and it's good for the city of Bellevue. It keeps our property values strong. It keeps our workforce strong, and it keeps our youth healthy and strong. So, I am enthusiastic, yes, to support the resolution, to support this bond.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Thank you, Mayor Robinson. Yeah, I think my councilmembers, my colleagues have said everything needs to be said. Great comments, and I echo all of them. But on a personal level, my daughter's about to enter the Bellevue School District, so absolutely, I'm in favor of this.
She'll get to it.
Absolutely. And hopefully, she will not have to eat outside during lunch hour. But, you know, we pride ourselves so much to have a school district that is recognized both regionally and nationally. Absolutely, I'm supportive of this levy, because, well, just like the Digital City Awards, I want to be number one in that. I also want us to have the number one school district in the nation. So, and this is going to go a long ways to do just that. So, let's get it done, and look forward to supporting this.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say, I echo my fellow councilmembers' comments. There's just no better investment than in our youth. And an investment in our youth is an investment in our future. So, I am very supportive as well. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve, whoops.
Adopt.
Yeah. I move to adopt Resolution 9716 in support of Bellevue School District, Proposition Number One.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, excellent.
We had six seconds.
Let me go down the list. If I've missed anything, I don't think there's anything left at our meeting. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.